It is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would recognize Selectman Baker, who hasn't done it in a little while.
Your day was up.
Pledge allegiance to America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All members of the Board are present. Approval of minutes. Peg has been busy. Everybody had a chance to review them?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February 18th, the regular meeting as presented.
There's a second?
Selectman Norde will second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Budget Presentations Workshop, February 18.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop Minutes from February 18th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Sarah, seconded by Marie. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Budget Workshop, February 24.
Selectman Norde will move to approve the meeting minutes from the special budget presentation, February 24th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion or correction? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Okay.
Selectman Norde will move to approve the regular meeting minutes from Thursday, March 18th, 2021, as presented.
Selectman Muska will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
So I just want to say, I think our packet tonight was 115 pages. Most of that was meeting minutes. So Peg does a hell of a good job, and I just want to thank her for that because that is, that is a lot of work. So Peg, thank you very much.
Besides, it's a lot of work, and they're very detailed this time around, which was excellent. So if there's anything open for interpretation, it's not now. Nice job, Peg.
We're on to public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, there'll be another opportunity later in the meeting. So in your packet, there are two items listed under Communication on the Agenda, but only one of them is included in the packet. So I'll make sure that the budget message that was submitted in support of the, the town budget is included on April 15. The same will hold true. I sent a letter today, cosigned by four other municipal leaders to the Governor concerning the, the gaming deal that was negotiated. That'll be included on our April 15, in our April 15 Agenda as well. So I'll make a note to do those two things. And then there was the letter from Congressman Larson that was listed and included that indicates what the municipal and local education assistance from the federal government will be as part of the American Rescue Plan funding. Town's going to get $1.15 million, and the school district is going to get $2.27 million. That's before county per capita allocations, which, because Connecticut doesn't have county government, there will be additional allocations still as yet to be determined. So those numbers will go, at least, at least the town side, if not both sides, will go up. We have no resignations. We do have a reappointment. Dan Morgan, as a member of the Veterans Commission, for a regular term expiring May 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
Selectman Muska will move to reappoint Daniel Morgan to the Veterans Commission as a regular member for a term expiring May 1st, 2025.
Is there a second?
We're, D'Souza will second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Agenda item 9A. I invite Ruth Calabrese and Rebecca Talamin to present the Board with what they have been working on. I'll turn the share screen options on to...
I was going to say, I'll probably end up sharing my screen. Oh, this one. Alrighty. So I know that this has been brought up to the Board of Selectmen many years ago, prior to me becoming on the Board, but we kind of reinvigorated the fee and wetlands ordinance over the past probably year and a half, just because COVID kind of delayed us a little bit with not being able to meet in person. So that kind of put us back, but we're back on track now. And in your packet, I believe it's 9A, is a copy of this presentation, as well as the ordinance itself. So why do we need this ordinance? The vast majority of violations, we don't need this violation for. Most of the time, things are taken care of in a timely manner. They respond to our notice of violation, and they work directly with us with no issues. But of course, we have that very small number of violations that aren't as cooperative with us, and they don't like to get back to us. And kind of the only option for us to do is, at this point, without this violation and fee schedule ordinance in place, is basically just taking it to the attorney. And with all of the delays that come along with that, potentially getting more damage to the wetlands from whatever has been causing the issues in the violation in the first place. And then, lastly, this ordinance is not meant to get the wetland damage remediation as quickly as possible, but it's an incentive to reach compliance, so we don't have to force people to court. And the goal for us is compliance. We're not looking to find people. We want them to work with us, so we don't have to find them. But in the situation where we do, we have put together this kind of tree of how the process would all work, and kind of when the fees would commence. And as you can see, we have three options for them to resolve the matter without getting fined in the first place. And the fines is really the last resort for us. So the workflow that we have, I'll kind of just go through it really quickly. We get a complaint received, a violation has been confirmed, and then the notice of violation has been sent out. Within 30 days, if that violation has not been corrected, you continue going down. If it has been corrected, it's case closed, and they're working on the correction. So if the matter is urgent, or if it's not urgent, we have two different routes we can go. If it's not really urgent, we will send out a second notice of violation, which again, they have 30 days to either correct that and respond. And if it is an urgent matter, it comes to the Wetlands Commission, and then we vote to decide the citation that we have. And then, if the violation is corrected, again, that matter gets closed, no fines are issued. It comes to the Board. We, we note the issues. Again, they have another 30 days to correct the violation, and if it's, if it's taken care of, matters close. But if not, we have to request, the, the violator would go for a request for appeals. We'd have to hold a hearing and all of that fun stuff that goes along with it. And again, that can definitely be a timely process as well, which could potentially be more damage to the wetlands. And after that entire appeals process, the matter could be dismissed, and the, there's no fines to be had. But if there are issues and things are not being resolved, that's when our fines would commence. Are there any questions on that part of it?
I have one.
Yeah.
What constitutes a matter of urgency versus not urgent?
So this, there's no real definition for that. It's kind of just the discretion of the Board. Certainly, if it's within a floodplain, we consider that pretty urgent. If it's just something on the smaller side, somebody put it deck, and then they're within 150 feet of the Upland Review area. Not a huge concern as compared to being something happening and being put into the floodplain.
Thank you. Good answer.
Any other questions on this? All right. So then, just to take a look at our schedule of fees, again, I don't need to read all of this unless there's any questions on a particular thing. But in all of the descriptions of the fees, we have up to, so it's the discretion of the Board, that the max fee would be the listed amount there. And again, if it's something on the smaller side, not as big of a violation, we can certainly change that. And I feel like I'm missing something that I'm saying in this as well, as to why we had that up to Ruth or Ellen. Either of you can help me out.
Sorry, I just got a question. I missed your question.
Um, we have up to in there, and I remember that we kind of had discretion as to why we would go to the limit and why we wouldn't go up that high. It's escaping me as to what an example might be of that.
My recollection is the Inland Wetlands Commissioners were talking about the level of cooperation, and whether you were dealing with a commercial entity versus a residential.
Yes.
And it just gave that kind of discretion.
Yes, that's exactly what I was trying to think of. Thank you, Ruth.
Historically, there's been a faction in town that has, you know, been nervous that, you know, since we do have a lot of areas that are, at least in the Upland Review, that, you know, you could be, do a simple little thing and, and end up with a huge fine. So this is kind of speaking to that, you know, really putting it out there that we have discretion, and that we, you know, we're trying to size these fines according to the severity of the, of the action, and that we also have some discretion in there, depending on what kind of compliance we get or don't get.
Yes. So I'll take any questions because that's the last slide. Again, we would like the approval and the go-ahead from the Board of Selectmen to continue moving forward with this process to get our ordinance and fine schedule in place. Marie?
Yeah, in the draft copy of the violation, it says on there that each day, if it's not violation still exists, then there's an additional violation is going to be made. In the presentation, it's not listed on there. Can you explain what, what new violation would get them on, or is it just a every day that they're...
Yeah, so it would just be every day that they haven't, like, started working with us to remediate the issue. So basically, if we have sent a letter and they've signed off, that they've received it, and they just have not responded to us, that same fine would continue going day after day for that same violation. But if they started to work with us, we would either stop that fine, or depending on what the situation is, work with the violator.
This mirrors the current planning and zoning schedule.
Okay.
That's, it's pretty typical.
So is there a point where the accrual is capped, and it automatically transitions over to legal action, or does, does that not necessarily happen? And in the circumstance where fines are accrued, are we attaching a lien to recoup the, the amount owed?
So in the past, our only two actions is to go from zero to 60, or, so what we've done, if you remember, there was a market drive issue two years ago or so, or maybe three, and we put a lien on that property, or at least the Board requested it. I'm guessing, I'm thinking maybe it never got done. But so, yes, you would, you could do that. But typically, you know, the, this is just one part of the violation process. You know, we have, this would be a tool to keep us out of court, but if it got to the point where the person was just like ignoring you, the next question, the next step would be go to court, you know, and get a judgment there, which, right now, that's, we just go right to court. And, and we currently have a case that, that, as you know, we are dealing with, where it's pretty significant, the violation is, and we were completely scoffed at, basically, throughout the whole process, and, and had no recourse except to go to court. The problem with that, I think, for residents of this town, who may have not taken the town seriously, if it's local fees, if we eventually come to an agreement and we're all happy with it, and there was no lasting damage, we can work with those fees, as far as we can decide how much we want to actually find them in the end. Judgment comes from the court, we're out of it. You're, you're going to pay whatever that court says. You have no choice. So this kind of gives you that stopgap in the middle.
And if you follow the ordinance as it's written, when you get to the end of the flow chart, fines commence. If the fines are not paid, then we submit that to Superior Court, and it becomes like a full judgment in the court system.
So up to that point, oh, hold on a second. So if I'm a bad actor, and you guys have been trying to work with me, and I decide I'm, you know, whatever, it's, you guys can't do anything. You start leveling $750 fines a day, and after, I should have done easier math, after 10 days, there's $7,500 now owed to the town, and I say, okay, wait, I get it. I get the point. Now I'm going to clean up my mess. This ordinance allows you to waive that accrued $7,500?
Yes.
That seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think that becomes from the statutes. I think that, that you, if you don't have a mechanism to, to give people, you know, recourse, appeals, and all that stuff, which, as you, as you can see in the ordinance, they have all kinds of, there's all kinds of spots where they can, you know, cry uncle and, and come, have their come to Jesus moment, you know. But, you know, in the end, you know, it's up to us what to do. But again, the whole idea is that we, we want compliance, not fines.
And I did notice that there, there seemed to be an awful lot of off-ramps. There's a lot of opportunity for somebody who's not in compliance to, to come back into compliance and have the matter stopped. There were like seven different points where you can say, okay, matter closed, matter closed, matter closed. You kept getting to that. I only traced, really, I think, two ways that you could get to fines are imposed, and both of them went through a citation hearing.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, I think we pretty closely mirror what planning and zoning does, and it's not just our planning and zoning, but all planning and zoning, pretty, pretty much the same throughout the state, I think.
Yeah, and like I said, our goal is for compliance. We're not trying to find people. We want them to work with us, so.
Right, but we do know that there are those one or two bad actors who are going to need the fine in order to get to compliance.
Yes, exactly.
I, I think you guys have, and I know this has taken a long time, but it shows how long this has taken. This is a very good piece of work. So congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Say that a lot of thanks go to the whole Commission, especially Rebecca and Ruth, who did a lot of the getting, pulling it all together in the end, and putting together the presentation and, and all the stuff that you see. So thank you to both of them.
Yeah, 22A-44A specifically allows for the fine order to remain in place until lifted by the agency, which would be the Water Course Agency. So it's right, you referenced the statute, it's right in the statute saying that we can fix this. Marie?
Yeah, who was the hearing officer that you refer to in the draft?
I think that the hearing officer is appointed by the Selectmen.
And I thought it was Bob Slate. Am I right in recalling that?
Yeah, I don't know if it still is, but...
You might want to, we might want to check into that, Jay, if we pass a, or we have somebody that is actually appointed.
I believe we did appoint him in a meeting. I remember doing that. I don't know the date, though.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it on the website now, and it's not popping out in any place I think it should be. Call it, is it a hearing citation officer?
I believe so.
The Board of Appeals?
Hearing officer.
I can check with the clerk. Okay, so you guys have, Rebecca and Ruth have presented this to us. We have the ordinance in front of us. Has this been reviewed by Pullman?
Numerous occasions.
In final form?
Not in final form.
Okay.
Previous final form, yes, but not in this final form. So it should be, Diane, I know Diane Whitney actually probably wrote much of the original, and, and the form that was, the, the version of it that we've brought before, you know, years ago, was, you know, well, and so this has been further fleshed out, and could probably get another set. Yeah, it probably should be.
So Rebecca or Ruth, could you send me the word version of this, so that we can get that off to Pullman for, for town review?
I'll do that. Sure.
And then, once we get that back, we'll put it on an agenda for consideration, and if approved, it'll go to a town meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Ruth, for sending that.
Are you guys going to change the dates on here, the revision dates? You've got it now as ordinance number 2020-something. Are we going to change that because the year has gone by to 2021?
Yeah, it'll be 21-1, I think.
21-1, okay.
Hey, luck.
Great.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so this next item, the Kirma rate lock, I was hoping that Amy would be here, but there was obviously the scheduling conflict with the Board of Finance. We have, in the past, entered into multi-year agreements with Kirma to lock in our rates at amounts not to exceed. We are in year, well, we're going into the final year of a three-year rate lock with an amount not to exceed 3%. In at least two of those years, we have not had rate increases at that maximum. So they presented us with an opportunity to lock in for an additional three years at an amount not to exceed 5%. And we pushed back on that. We had a meeting, the superintendent was included, their, their business people were included, Amy and I, and our Kirma rep, and we said, you know, our exposure and our experience is, is very minimal. You know, we're, we're not sure why we're going from a not to exceed 3 to a not to exceed 5. What's the story here? And she said, well, quite honestly, your experience is good, but the market is calling for double-digit increases. So if we don't have a rate lock in place. So the question is, do we, do we lock in an amount not to exceed 5%, or do we take our chances in a market where we're seeing 12, 14, 15% increases in risk management, risk management exposure? My suspicion is, what will happen is, if we enter into this 5% agreement, something very similar to what's happened in the current one, which is, we probably won't hit that. But it's a contract, we'd need to talk about it. We need to talk about if, if we want to take that chance, or if we want to go on the, the open market. So that's kind of where things stood. Questions or comments on that?
Well, I don't think you would want to go out to look at the market, because Kirma has always been, at least in my dealings, over the years, the cheapest for municipalities.
By far.
Yeah.
And they're a full-service operation, too. I mean, they offer legal assistance, they offer risk management analysis. We, we work with them quite a bit. I'm happy with them as a service carrier. I like that in this deal, it's a three-year deal with the first year being the one we're coming into as a zero, which means that it's, it's really, at worst, 10% over three years, which means it's a little more than 3 and a 3 and 1/4%. That's pretty reasonable, all things considered. But we can roll the dice and see what we get.
So are you looking to have this put in a form of a motion?
Yeah, I, if, I would like authorization from the Board to sign the new three-year deal between Kirma and the Town of East Windsor.
So I'll make a motion to allow the, excuse me, first Selectmen to enter into a three-year contract with Connecticut International Risk Management Agency, otherwise known as Kirma, effective from July 1st, 2021 to 2022, through July 1st, '23 to '24.
Is there a second?
Selectman Muska will second.
Motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
And Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Okay, I'll, I'll execute that on Monday. The next thing, so this is PowerPoint night. I have a new PowerPoint for you guys. Oops, I had to share it for you before you can see it. Hang on a second. Still not popping up. So let's do it this way. Put it on the other screen. Okay. So I want to talk about the American Rescue Plan. And this is the, the law that was recently passed by Congress and signed into, signed into law by President Biden. It does have a material positive impact on the Town of East Windsor, and I wanted to talk to you about what our options are. So the law was signed in the beginning of last month. Some aspects of it are that it provides relief to individuals and families in terms of direct payments. It expands the child tax credit and triples the earned income tax credit. It expands tax credit availability for employers under FMLA. Many employers and employees took advantage of tax credits and additional leave time under the Families First Corona Recovery Act, which was part of the CARES Act passed in April of last year. That extended emergency family medical leave time for anybody who was dealing with a number of different COVID-related criteria. Under the ARP, the American Rescue Plan, the Town of East Windsor is set to receive at least 1.15 million in town aid, and the BOE is set to receive 2.27 million. This doesn't come without restriction, and I'll talk about that in a second. But, and I mentioned this earlier, because the state of Connecticut does not have county government... But, and I mentioned this earlier, because the state of Connecticut does not have county government, that money that was assigned in the ARP for county aid is going to be dispersed to municipalities within each county, in our case Hartford County, on a per capita basis. I don't know what the per capita allocation is yet, but our funding will be more than the 1.15 million. It'll probably be closer to the 1.3 million range. So here's what local governments can use ARP funding for. We can use it to respond to the negative impacts on households, small businesses, and nonprofits. We can use it to aid industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. We can use it to provide premium pay for municipal employees who have performed essential work. We can use it to recoup lost municipal revenue. We can use it to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband, or infrastructure. So I'll cross a couple of these off and then let you know kind of what my thought process is here. First and foremost, we are in the very enviable position of not having lost municipal revenue. So that's not an available use to us. Also, I think that there is a pretty reasonable expectation that, you know, our employees came to work because that's what their job has been, not because there was going to be a financial reward. So I'm not recommending essentially premium pay for municipal workers as part of the pandemic. The other the other three options are interesting. So funds must be spent by the end of calendar year 2024. Local governments will receive this money in two tranches. One, sometime around the middle of June, and the second half of it about a year later. Local governments can't use the funds, cannot use the funds for deposit into pension funds or to offset directly or indirectly a tax cut. We are prohibited by federal law from doing that, and they have clawback provisions that they can use to recover any money that is used in violation of the Authorizing Act. So the first thing that I'm proposing is to utilize some of the funding, $300,000 for clean water projects. I'm proposing we set aside this money to help with two neighborhood projects that are in the process of being hopefully approved for state revolving fund water project grants through DPH. The first of these is an extension of the water line from Ry Street, about 1,100 feet down Plantation Road. And the second is to attach the community well in the School Hill neighborhood to the Connecticut Water Company. Both of these neighborhoods have concerns about contaminant levels that are approaching unsafe conditions. In the case of Plantation Road, they're particularly concerned with EDBs, but they do have a nitrate problem as well. And in the School Hill neighborhood, it's nitrates that are the primary cause of concern. We've met with both, with representatives from both neighborhoods, as have representatives from DPH and DEEP and our local legislators, and we worked with Connecticut Water to help put the applications together for state revolving fund qualifications. So we don't know yet, because the applications were just due yesterday, whether any of the applications will be accepted. We do know that there will be a considerable cost borne by the residents who may have to connect to Connecticut Water. The way that it works is because Connecticut Water is regulated by the Public Utility Regulatory Authority, they need to, the water company needs to be able to demonstrate to PURA that within a period of time, the ratepayers will be able to cover the cost of the project expansion. In at least one of these projects, it's a seven-figure project that they're they're talking about, and that's the School Hill project is the back of the envelope math shows that it it's probably around $1.1 million to do the project. So we're hopeful that the state revolving fund will be able to offset a chunk of that, and that we could offset some of that as well, but ultimately, some of that cost, the majority of that cost, is still going to have to be borne by the people who live there. In the School Hill circumstance, there are 31 homes and 87 residents that are impacted by potentially hazardous water. It's considerably less in the Plantation Road section. There are about 12 homes out there. I don't know the number of residents, but when we met with them, the residents were lukewarm about the prospect of even having the water line run because they didn't want to pay the connection fees. So those are the two water projects that I'd like to set aside 300,000 for of the 1.15 million, so that we have something that we can do to help them with the cost, recognizing that we're not going to be able to defray the whole cost, but so that we can help them with the cost. Proposal number two has to do with the implementation of a small business nonprofit COVID assistance grant program. And so when I was at the Department of Agriculture, Governor Malloy made $5 million available to production agriculture and tasked the department with creating a grant program to make sure that we were funneling that money to those people who were truly adversely impacted by weather-related instances so that we could help that sector. I want to model that and take the remaining 900,000 here and focus it on small business and nonprofit relief for for those entities that are in our community. So I put together some of the criteria that I would suggest that we consider, but what I want to do is make sure that we can spread that around well enough to have a meaningful impact. So I'm suggesting that we take 900,000 and we allocate those in grants not to exceed $5,000, I'm sorry, $10,000 per applicant. Because the money is going to come in in two waves, one now, one later, I'm recommending that we do 5,000 this year and 5,000 next year for the same awardees. If, in the event that we got more applications that qualified for funding than we had funding available, we'd prorate that so that, you know, everybody who, so that we're able to help as many different entities as we can. To administer this, I'd like to bring in a contracted grant administrator, which we would put out an RFQ for, so that we can make sure that there's somebody thoughtfully administering the program from development of the criteria to review of the applications to issuing of the payments. I put together, just for discussions purposes, some suggested evaluation criteria. They got to be in good tax standing with the with the Town of East Windsor. They have to be in good standing with the Secretary of State. They must be able to show an economic loss that's due to the pandemic, and this would have to come in some sort of documentation like tax records or revenue sheets. They would need to be able to provide a narrative explaining the nature of the loss and why it's due to the pandemic. They would need to be able to provide documentation as to the number of employees that they had before, during, and after the pandemic. They would need to be able to provide a listing of other sources of assistance that they have applied for, and I would suggest giving preference to those companies that were required to close versus the pandemic due during the pandemic due to executive orders. So those are the things that I'm thinking about, but really, I think that this, because this has found money in part eligible to be used for small business and nonprofit assistance, I think that's certainly, I think that's what we should do with.
Jake, can we ask questions as we go along? Do you want to wait?
I'm done. So go ahead.
All right. First, first slide presentation on Plantation Road.
Yep.
At the meeting that I was on Zoom a couple of weeks back with people. At that time, the water company had not gotten back to anyone. Do you know if they reached back out to see if it's still feasible?
I know we submitted an application on their behalf to the state revolving fund. The cost implications on the on the individual homeowners, I don't believe, has been identified yet. We, because of the public safety concern, the focus really was on the School Hill neighborhood. You know, it's not entirely clearly documented that there is a problem on Plantation Road, whereas we have quarterly testing that shows there is an imminent problem in School Hill.
Yeah, I agree with School Hill been a problem for years. Yeah, okay.
They have been, one of their representatives has submitted quarterly chemical testing reports from their water to me that has shown that their nitrate level on a part-per-million basis is going up by about one part-per-million every month, or every quarter over the last year. They were, they started 2020 at about seven, seven parts-per-million, and they're now at 10.5. The safe number is 10. They were, in their December report, they were at 10.3, which is still considered safe, even though it's over the safe limit because you round to the nearest whole number. Now that they're at 10.5, they round to 11, and now there there actually are some concerns. If that persists going forward, there is a big problem there.
And the second question, going forward on your recommended criteria.
Yeah.
Businesses have to, or nonprofits have to be up on their taxes in town. I normally would agree if any grant money is being given, taxes should be paid for. But if somebody is behind in their taxes due to the fact that they had to shut their business down and couldn't afford to pay this past year, I don't think they should be excluded. Now, if they're behind five, six years in taxes, that's a different story. But if they're just behind from the time the pandemic started until they now, I don't think they should be excluded. That's just my opinion.
So I'm not sure if we're allowed to lend government money to pay taxes.
Not saying to pay taxes, but to lend them money to get them back started so that then they then can pay their back tax.
That's the same thing. So let me just back up for a second. The list of criteria that I threw out there, they're just ideas on a page. What I would, what I would do is, is, once we do an RFQ for a grant administrator, they would would define what the parameters for this project would need to be, starting from this or things that have been omitted or whatever, and then bring that criteria to the board for us to approve at that point. These are just, this is a back-of-the-envelope kind of like, you know, what are those main things that we should be thinking about? But I'll flag a note there in the presentation to just show that current up to the start of the pandemic. Let's be interesting.
And I don't even know if there's anybody that would fall under that that criteria, but I just would hate to have somebody that is trying to reestablish themselves, not be able to. But you're right, you got to follow the law.
I'll check on both of those things, but again, the intention is to get the approval from you guys to go ahead and do the RFQ so that we can then start the development of this process in a way that will be more flushed out than my slide PowerPoint.
Yep, I agree.
I think I think that the the signal that this sends to the the business community in town is that we want them here. We want them to be partners, and we want to be a part of helping them to do whatever they need to do. So I think this is a good signal for the town to send.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I think it's, I think the business thing is a no-brainer. I love it, I love it, love it. And then the the water thing, I guess I, as far as Plantation Road goes, you know, I run by there, I run by those houses a lot, and, you know, they're they're pretty decent, nice houses, and I personally live right around the corner. I have a well, I've recently had a full, like, everything you get tested, I got tested, and you know, I have not the same problem. It's really funny, as close as we are, even where I'm sitting now has a different water profile than where my well is across the street. A lot, you know, a lot of different stuff. But anyway, I think, you know, in my case, you know, we just had the water main put down Ry Street, and, you know, we all have to make the decision, do we want to keep our wells or get on the main? In my case, even for, you know, for what I need to do to filter my water where I'm comfortable with it, it actually will cost less than hooking up to the water main, and I think that a lot of the people on on Plantation Road would would actually be in that same in that same category where if they bought a filter system, it would be cheaper, you know, than having Connecticut Water. Both the initial installation of either and the ongoing cost of it. So I'm not sure that I'm on board with spending a bunch to, you know, there's a possibility on Plantation Road that, you know, you know, whatever that cost gets spent, and then then one person connects to it because everybody else wants to keep their well. Most of those are very new wells.
When we had the conversation with them the beginning of March, I was clear that, you know, there would be a critical mass point that they need to get to for this to even be viable from Connecticut Water's perspective. And if they can't make that demonstration to PURA, they're not going to get approved for it. So and it's unfortunate that the folks from DPH weren't on that call, nor were Connecticut Water, despite both of them confirming that they would be. The, without a critical mass of the folks on that neighborhood, I'm not sure that's a viable project. School Hill is a different circumstance where they will not have a choice except to find a water alternative if their contaminant levels continue to increase. And that's 31 residents, there are 31 residences that Connecticut Water was going to be able to demonstrate that they pick up. So I, of the two, I think School Hill is a more urgent and viable project, but we don't need to decide either of those things right now. We don't have to spend this money until 2024, so we can set a portion of the 1.15 aside and then allocate or or go through the RFQ process to disperse the the other portion of it. And that's going to be, as we've seen, it's going to be a years-long, a year-long process. It's going to be the first half in 2021, the second half in 2022, because that's when we're going to get the money. So that I'd like to start sooner than later, in case there are any of those businesses. Like, I've visited Soto Optical a couple of weeks ago, just to do a business visit, and she had opened, I think she said she opened in January of 20, and then was shut down until May or June of 20, and then just moved her office location and is struggling. You know, and so I wanted, and I don't think $5,000 is going to be the difference between people staying open or not necessarily, but it might be the difference between catching up on back rent. It might be the difference between keeping the lights on. It might be the difference between, you know, being able to draw a little bit of salary yourself to say, you know, this is a business worth keeping into, and to be able to support that going forward. With a two installment concept, you could, you could say to somebody like, like Georgia Golden Irenes, you know what, we're going to help you to build that that bigger commercial or buy that bigger commercial refrigerator to help diversify your business model. So that, and because you've done so much for, in his case, because he's done so much for the community during the pandemic, this is a way for the town to support that work that he did. So I'd rather, I put more urgency on the small business assistance in starting that ball rolling, because by the time we put together an RFQ, post an RFQ, review an RFQ, it's almost June, if we start right now today. And that's, I think there's a more of an urgency there than than the water projects, because we don't know when those are going to be approved.
Yeah, I love the idea of helping out the restaurants, anything, you know, people really depended on them when this all first started getting crazy, you know? And they all had costs. They went outside, they made patios, they, you know, they did a bunch of stuff.
Charlie, Sarah, any comments?
So, yeah, I have several, actually. I agree with helping out the small businesses. I question whether we would get that many applications to reach that number. And I also am concerned for our local departments who have also had to deal with this issue and have had some extra costs in relating to COVID, and we don't seem to be touching upon that. Now, granted, we've got time to spend this money. But I think that should be looked at as well. Police, fire, EMS, social services have all had to deal with this.
None are eligible. So, so the Broadbrook Fire Department's Association, their their social club, would be eligible for this as a nonprofit. The corporation would not be. The same holds true with Warehouse Point Fire District would not be eligible for this. The the Police Department is a department of the town, and departments of the town have been made whole through other means, including the Corona Recovery Fund that was administered, I think, through HEROES and through FEMA reimbursements. So the expanse of opportunity for what this money can be used for is pretty limited, and it's limited to those five things. We can only spend it on that. Now, looking at the the Board of Education allowable expenditures, they have like a list of like 16 things, and the 17th thing is anything else that might be relevant. We have five choices. And and that's it. To step outside the line is to invite the feds to take the money back.
Okay, well, the letter he sends then is misleading. Okay. Well, the letter he sends then is misleading in, in announcing all of those things.
Yeah, this is, I, I put this together with the information that was put forward through CCM.
Okay.
And I cited that, I think, almost every slide. What are your other questions or comments?
So if we get, say, we only get 10 applicants and they're all granted, you know, the 10, you know, $1,000 that you're, you're, you're capping it at, then, then where do we scramble for the next project to incur the rest of the money?
A cou- couple of things. So the first, first and foremost, we have almost 1,000 eligible entities that are registered in the town of East Windsor. So if you're talking about, I, I don't think we're going to get 10. But in the event that we did and we cap it at, again, the, the cap that I put in there is just for discussion sake. I'm going to have, once we do an RFQ and bring on a grant coordinator, they're going to put a project together and maybe they go with 10, maybe they go with five, maybe they go with 20. It's a conversation starter. Thirdly, we have until the end of calendar year 2024 to disperse the money according to those five criteria. So in the event that there is extra money, we can revisit it for a qualifying project within those five criteria. Maybe we underwrite a greater percentage of the School Hill Water Project. You know, maybe there's a, a water line that we want to run. We can't even run the water line because we can't be an applicant in front of Pura, but you know, there, there is opportunity for us to revisit the circumstance where we have additional funding.
And then do we also need to, or does the Board of Finance need to set a placeholder for this money specifically? So that we know where it is, how much is there and how it's being spent?
I'll have to talk to Amy about that. It's a non-general fund account. Or it's a non-general, it's, it's non-general fund revenue, it's not coming into the general fund. So I'll have to talk to her about the mechanations of that. But it's a grant, so we would administer it the same way we, we administer any other grant, which is through the administrative process. So the way I envision this going is we bring on a, a grant administrator. We put out the criteria that we're, we're seeking to administer the grant under. We solicit back the responses, review the applications. Maybe we give people an opportunity to correct deficiencies in applications. If, if there's, you know, you didn't really check this box here, do you want to try and clarify that? Helping with the intention of helping the, the business community in town. Then after the, those determinations are made, we would issue the first half of that award through the Treasurer's Office. And with the caveat that, you know, if you're not in business this time next year, the second half of that's not going out. You know, so there's going to have to be a, a recurrence of a demonstrated need. That's the process I kind of envisioned having laid out here. And I, I, this is really, as I said before, this is all based on my experience at the Department of Agriculture. When we did a very similar thing, that, you know, Lamont dropped $5 million on our lap and said to the press, these guys will have a, a program to announce by the end of the week. It was Wednesday. So we put together this, this application, this process. It took us, we had 274 applicants and $12 million worth of, of requests for $5 million of, of available money. So by the time we did the, the review of all of the applications that were submitted, that 12 and a half million went down to about eight and a half million. But we still had eight and a half million dollars of qualifying expenses and $5 million. So we prorated it and everybody got about 60% of what their request was. That way, there were no losers in the thing, as long as they were eligible applicants. We were able to get the money out the door. We were able to support the intention of what the funding was made available for. Trying to emulate that process and apply it here is, is kind of how I came up with that, you know, the, the evaluation criteria and the, the process. But that can change. What else you got? Charlie, you're good? Sarah, you have anything?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of your small business assistance proposal and definitely in favor of getting the RFQ process started. I do share some of Charlie's concerns as far as if we still had money left over and not enough applicants. And also with the, the water project, I'm, I kind of share the concerns of Alan as well. But like you said, we don't have to spend the money tomorrow. We have time to decide. So I'm okay with the process getting started and, and see how it goes.
Marie, do you have anything?
I, I think you did a good, good run at it, Jay. I think the water, both those neighborhoods. And I think the small businesses and businesses in town that got hit the hardest, and if they're interested, they're going to come through. And I think you covered your bases with that. And if there's any money left over, like you said, we have, you know, to 2024 to reallocate it.
We don't even get it all until the middle of 2022.
Right, two installments, yep.
Okay, so the next step then would be for the board to approve the issuance of, of an RFQ for a grant administrator for the ARP funding.
I'll make a
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. You're the deputy. You're first.
Make a motion on there we allow first selectmen to provide an RFQ to the American Rescue Plan Funding Proposal presented this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Could you send us this email, this presentation?
PowerPoint?
Yes, I would like to have it, please. Thank you.
Now, is there a group of people that are that the state's going to guide you to, to hire, to do this proposals?
Oh, we're going to, we're going to post the RFQ the same way we would post an RFP for other projects.
Okay.
There's a, a solicitation process that, that is out there.
Okay.
I do have somebody I'm going to ask to apply.
Okay.
Charlie, Alan, Sarah, Charlie, Marie. And the motion's been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, Selectman Baker. Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I probably won't have anything back by April 15th because of the holiday tomorrow. But it'll be close to that. So expect something either April 15th or at the, the May meeting for review and comment. Thank you very much. The next one is just to, the next agenda item is to reschedule the town meeting that we had scheduled for April 29th. I want to push that forward two weeks to April 15th just to make sure we have adequate time to get the ballot drawn up. And I'm, I'm just thinking, I think it's 12 or 13 days. No, it's 12 days from the 29th to the first referendum. I'd just like an extra, you know, two weeks or so to make sure that we get that right, because there's verbiage concerning the town budget, which should be done by the 15th and the Broadbrook Fire Department question and the added appropriation question. So I just think, I just want a little bit more time just to make sure that, that there are no process or administrative hiccups. So I'd ask that we reschedule the previously scheduled town meeting from April 29th to April 15th, which would be our next Board of Selectment meeting.
Selectman Muska will move to reschedule the town meeting from April 29th to April 15th at 7:30 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion?
Jason, that guy, that timeframe, that meeting meets the criteria for the Broadbrook Fire Department?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, they're done.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? Selectman Baker. Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to table, which means we'll take it up later. I'd like to table Agenda Items 9E and F, so we can discuss those later and then we'll come out of executive session and act on them. I have a motion to table Agenda Items 9E and F.
Marie, just to make a motion to table new business items E and F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker. Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Okay, we're on to tax refunds.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the tax refunds totaling $2,652.60.
Is there a second?
Selectman Norrell will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectmen's reports. By now, everyone has heard of the gaming deal negotiated by the Lamont Administration and the two tribes and also knows that a provision of that agreement precludes the development of a gaming facility in East Windsor for a duration, for the duration of that agreement, which is at least 10 years, possibly longer. The most concerning aspect of that deal is that the preclusion, uh, uh, the most concerning deal of the preclusion of that deal in East Windsor is the future use of the old showcase property. It is unacceptable for a 30-acre parcel of commercial property between highway exits to be left undeveloped for 10 years or more. Over the last two weeks, I have had many conversations with tribal leaders, the Lamont Administration and our legislative delegation to stress how important that parcel is to East Windsor's future development. I've also stressed that our concern isn't that it won't be a casino. I think everyone realized that a number of years ago, it wasn't going to be a casino. Our concern is that the parcel cannot be left undeveloped. To that end, I authored a letter to the governor that was cosigned by municipal leaders in Windsor Locks, Ellington, South Windsor and East Hartford that argued that our communities need to be made whole in terms of revenue associated with that deal. The letter was copied to the legislators who serve all five of those communities and they collectively represent nearly 120,000 people. I've appeared on WTIC AM 1080, Connecticut Public Radio and NBC CT stressing how important that site is to, to get back to contrib- contributing to our local tax base. And I've been clear that the state needs to help find meaningful development there. On March 19th, I was pleased to join East Windsor High School students to talk about careers in government. I shared my story from post-high school education to working in all three branches of state government to my role here now. I was delighted and impressed with the students who participated and with their thoughtful questions. I hope to do it again next year. As I alluded to earlier, on the 22nd, our legislative delegation and I met with Governor Lamont's Chief of Staff and with the Commissioner of DECD to talk about future uses of the Showcase Cinema Site. They provided no commitments to our community, which is disheartening. On the 23rd, Chief DeMarco and I met with municipal and public safety leaders from Enfield, Windsor Locks and Suffield to discuss a regional training facility that Enfield intends to build that would benefit the other three towns as well. I was pleased to provide a letter of support to the town manager of Enfield that stresses the regional value of a, of a facility like that. That's one of the lessons the pandemic has brought, that quite a lot of regional collaboration has been happening. And this is evidenced by this, this proposed public safety complex in Enfield, by the regional support advocating for, for remuneration to towns that stood to benefit financially from the casino and the reciprocity that has developed around the COVID-19 vaccination distribution program and the food distribution program. It's critical that these efforts continue into the future. On the 24th, I was pleased to join a boisterous crowd to support the opening of Broadbrook Pizza. They're located in the old Elaine's Village, Elaine's Pizza and Village Pizza 2 location. And I understand that their initial reception in town has been so popular that they had to temporarily shut down on their second day because people had bought up all of their products. That's a great start and a great show of support from the community. On the 25th, we distributed nearly 1,200 boxes of fresh food to people in our community and surrounding communities. This is another example of partnership, partnerships that have been developed with surrounding towns, this time including Enfield, South Windsor and Vernon. We'll be doing another one on April 29th at a time to be determined, once we know how much supply we will have. We continue to hold COVID vaccine clinics whenever possible, and we will be doing our largest clinic to date tomorrow, administering, administering over 300 doses. It's very encouraging to see that access to supply for vaccine to local clinics like ours is starting to increase. And I understand that it, I understand that it's increasing through other means as well. To be added to the town's waiting list, you can call the Community Services Department. We have been offering and will be offering tomorrow the Moderna vaccine. And anyone over 18 years of age, 18 years or older, is eligible to sign up. We also maintain a, a waiting list to anyone who would like Pfizer or Johnson and Johnson, although those two have not been made available in local clinics because of the cooling requirements. So this is a really great community services that we're able, a community service that we're able to provide. I stress that we have been doing them whenever possible, because we don't know from one week to the next if we'll have supply or how much supply that is. It wasn't until Monday of this week that I was told that we would have 300 doses. So we have been rolling with the punches and the staff and volunteers and vendors that we have been using to help support this have really done an outstanding job of making it possible, and I want to thank them all. That's my report. I recognize the deputy for select.
Yeah, um, I have no report this, um, past two weeks, because none of my boards of commissions have met the last two weeks. I myself personally, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, attended the Planning and Zoning Meeting on the 23rd via Zoom. On the 24th, I attended both the Board of Finance and then jumped over to the Board of Ed Meeting. And on the 25th, again, with the Board of Finance, all regarding the budget stuff. Other than that, I don't have anything. And just a reminder, I'm on vacation from April 5th to the 12th, so I'll be out of this, out of this state.
I think, I was thinking that was next month. That's, that's next week.
Yes, that's Monday.
Why, time is flying.
Yes, it is.
Charlie.
I actually have nothing either. The only council that met while, since our last meeting was diversity and I was away during that time. So I have nothing.
Alan.
I don't have a lot for you, but the Agricultural Commission is, I just wanted to remind everybody, they are working on the community garden and that advertisement for the annual plowing, which is done by Jim Stramford with his horses is, is going out. So that's coming up soon. The Conservation Commission is still working on the open space ordinance, which was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their input. They had some pretty good input on that. And then there's been some more work on that since then. They're also, they finalized the farm list and that will, will appear in the next Village Voice. So they'll, basically they have a list of all the farms, no matter what size they are in town. And, you know, besides the Board of Finance budget stuff, which I've been going to their meetings as much as I can, that's about all I have for you. Yield back the balance of my time.
Sarah.
Okay, well, as, well, as Alan and Marie both mentioned, it is the budget process going on with the Board of Finance. There was a public hearing on March 24th and budget workshops continue. So if anyone would like to follow along or attend a Zoom meeting, please refer to the community calendar on the town's website. The Board of Education met on March 24th. Most of their meeting was held in executive session, but some of the highlights from the public portion included discussion of the start of spring sports and the consideration of allowing spectators at games and discussion of school pictures and hopefully allowing photographers in when students are back into the building full-time. Plans are being made for fourth and eighth graders to tour schools and discussions are being held on how to hold prom and graduation this year. The Warehouse Point Fire District is holding their annual Easter Flower Sale this weekend at Station 1 at 89 Bridge Street. at 89 Bridge Street in Warehouse Point. This fundraiser benefits the Warehouse Point Fire Department scholarships and various donations throughout the year. The sale begins tomorrow, and the hours are Friday and Saturday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And Sunday, 8:00 AM to noon, there will be tulips, lilies, azaleas, hydrangeas, and more. So be sure to arrive early for best selection. And the Warehouse Point Fire District will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 5th at 7:00 PM at Station 1 at 89 Bridge Street on their proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget that was approved by the Board of Fire Commissioners. A breakdown of their proposed budget can be found on WHPFD.org. And then there will be a special district meeting on Monday, April 19th at 7:00 PM at the same location to discuss and act upon a resolution adopting the budget. And just wishing all of you and your families a happy Easter and enjoy the weekend however you choose to celebrate. That's all I have.
Thanks very much. Um, is there any public participation? Peg? No, Peg. Okay, um, we are going to have an executive session. It'll just be the five of us. I do expect there will be action when we come out, so I'll I'll get the recording posted um, as soon as, as soon as we can, so Peg can grab that. Um, can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Selectman Nordeau.
Go ahead.
Selectman Nordeau will move, we enter executive session at 8:12 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Nordeau.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Good night, Peg.
Good night.
It's 8:29. We're out of executive session. We're going to move to take up Agenda Items 9E and 9F. Start with 9F since sequentially that makes the most sense, um, or sub, but based on subject. Um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, to authorize the signature of the First Selectman, um, to amend the county East Windsor defined pension plan as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Nordeau.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Agenda Item 9E. Would be a motion to approve appendix, uh, appendices H and I as presented.
I'll make a go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Make a motion to authorize the First Selectman to sign the uh, the appendixes H and I. Pension.
To approve and sign.
Approve and sign.
Motion's made and seconded. Has it been seconded?
Second.
Made and seconded. Discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Nordeau.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Okay, there are any other, uh, any further business to come before the uh, Board of Selectmen?
Just when the agent, when they, when those last two motions, the last two, they're the appendix H and appendix I go through, just clarify, um, the headings, because one's Dispatchers, one's Board of Education.
Mm-hmm. Board of Education is appendix H, Dispatchers is appendix I.
Right. But I'm just clarifying, because on the, um, agenda, it just says Board of Education.
Got it.
Okay.
Any further business to come before the board? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order?
Selectman Nordeau would move to adjourn our regular meeting at 8:32.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Selectman Baker. Selectman Nordeau.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
All right, good job, everybody. Have a great night. Happy Easter, and um, I'll probably see you at another Zoom in about 90 seconds.